James Preston, and then we'll begin. Okay. Morning, everybody. Welcome to October's Overview and Scrutiny Committee. First item on today's agenda are apologies. I've had apologies from councillor De Capel Brook. And councillor Eakins warned me he may not be able to make it, so I guess that is the case. Any other apologies? Sorry, I did, yes, I did. No other apologies. In that case, first thing I'd like to say, people will be aware there's been a slight change of membership in this committee. I'd like to thank councillors Richard Auger and Adam Brown for the sterling work that they've done over the last year or so. And welcome, Michael Clark, who is replacing Richard Auger, I believe. Nice to have you back with us, Michael. I'm sure your expertise in various fields will be of great benefit to us. Are there any notifications or requests from members of the public to address the meeting? There are none. In that case, declaration of members' interests, if any councillors have any kind of interest, now is the time to speak. But, in that case, item four today, Chair's announcements, standard one, there is no fire drill scheduled during the meeting. If the fire alarm bell rings, please leave the building and come back 20 minutes later or when told it is safe to do so. There has been a change to the original agenda. So I've not read this before. You've agreed that the Northamptonshire Highway Services scrutiny review would be come to this meeting. That's now been deferred in discussions with councillor Eakins, who was chair of that working group, rather. I believe the working group have a meeting with the chief exec next week, and there are a couple of other things that they want to finalise before giving us their draft reports. Okay. Today's items, then, we've got two substantive items. Item six, which deals with adult social care, and item seven, public health. We also want to revisit children's placements issue that we discussed at the last meeting to sort of reach any conclusions. So the first item today, then, oh, sorry, we've got the minutes from the last month's meeting, the 25th of September. Those that were in attendance, could you confirm that they are an accurate record? And can I sign them off as being so? Thank you very much. I'll take Chris's comments. Okay. Straight on, then, item six, adult social care. I'd like to welcome Anna Earnshaw, the director of social care, and Katie Brown, assistant director, to the meeting. At our request, this report will hopefully cover the current budgetary pressures within social care and detail the one-off mitigation actions that have taken place thus far in the year. We also wanted specifically, and the report covers this, details of the new target operating model, the sort of new arrangements improving the service in relation to the consultants Newton Europe who are developing that. But Anna, if I could perhaps ask you to briefly present your report, and then we'll have a time for a chat. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. So, by way of an introduction, obviously, as you said, I've submitted a report in advance. If I just kind of cover the key highlights, and then I'm sure there'll be questions. So generally, in terms of budget performance, the service is performing well under significant pressure. At the time of first drafting this report and issuing it to you, we were showing an underspend of 1.2 million. That will now be confirmed in the final outturn as 2 million underspent. As a result, some good work by Robin and the team in terms of debt collection and debt provision, which I'm sure you'll be going on to later. We're facing continued demand pressure, so although we are 2 million underspent, within that, there is still a 6.5 million pound overspend on care across the different client groups. That's kind of repeating what happened in the year before. It's not necessarily because we don't get the demand predictions right. It depends on whether we've built in enough growth. I will make the point, and the report makes the point, that for next year, we have built in really much more sophisticated predictions of what will happen based on the last three years and what we predict will happen in the next three years, which should address that underlying issue. In terms of the key drivers of our pressures, they are in effect five different things. Client numbers, which always amount for about 40% of all the demand pressures that we have when we see price rises. Acuity, i.e. the complexity of people's needs and people living longer with more complex needs. And care cost pressures, which kind of go together. So this is providers asking us for more money to deal with more complex people and the cost of placement, which accounts for about 60% of our demand pressures that we get in terms of rising costs. Transitions cases, which, as you'll see on the information I've provided, is running at about 1.3 million in overspend, mainly as a challenge, which we have got very, very clear plans now to address, about children who turn 18, who come to us, who we are not cited on, and who have significant packages of care and costs when they come over to us. We've done a lot of work and put in some extra investment in fixing that going forward, which I'm sure we'll come on to. Hospitals remain the single biggest area of demand, currently running at about 50% of all of our demand and set to rise considerably. Our hospitals, I was just saying to my colleague Katie, we have just under 1,000 people in hospitals stranded at the moment, and by that I do not mean waiting for social care. I mean stranded, don't need to be in hospital and need to be moved on. But admissions are incredibly high still, so we're seeing 114 admissions a day regularly in the hospitals at the moment, and 90 a day is enough to push us over the top in terms of the amount of capacity we've got to deal with people coming out and their acuity. And of course, if the hospitals are under pressure, then the knock-on effect is social care costs go up. We have, however, made a forecast and a provision for that rise over the winter, between now and the end of the year, about 3 million pounds that we've still got as cover for that to happen, but of course, we can't predict how bad that winter will be. The mental health pool is a small amount of, is also a demand pressure and budget pressure on us. This is a pool we run with Health, so it's a joint pool with joint commissioners, joint staff assessing. Mental health generally in the county is under pressure at the moment, but we have found that we need to be more engaged in making sure that the records of mental health patients and their care packages are regularly reviewed and stepped down. So we have seen that overspend and pressure come down, and we're hopeful by the end of the year that will be back on target. In terms of mitigations, there are in effect five key areas we've done that. So one is contracts inflation. We had a provision to lift all the fees up for providers this year. We kept back 3.2 million of that to try and offset some of the pressures we faced. In saying that, I'd clear to member, make clear to members, that doesn't mean to say we're not giving people uplifts, because we're still seeing them come to us and ask for individual uplifts or uplifts for packages of care. It just means we haven't automatically lifted all of their fees. Client income is up by just over a million, which is often an effect of the fact you've got more demand, as you'll get more income automatically. Better Care Fund, the final agreement with Treasury and Health, Department of Health, was that we would get an extra 725,000 pounds in funding to the Better Care Fund. We've got a million pound underspend on physical disabilities and a block contract saving, which was from contracts we saved, turned off last year, which have just continued. In terms of just the TOM work, I think we've set out to you why we have decided to do this work. Something I'll say repeatedly is externally, we benchmark really well. We look pretty efficient in costs and we do well in our ask-off measures. That does not mean that your customer experience is really, really good, and many DASs will tell you that. Our customers' report being passed from pillar to post, we know we've got backlogs, staff find that very upsetting and frustrating. So the real focus of the work that we were doing was, no matter how many staff we throw at issues, it doesn't solve some of these underlying problems. So the focus of the work was twofold. One is, are we doing the right things by customers and getting the right outcomes? Or are, as a result of our inefficiencies, we not getting people to the best place soon enough? So that was the main focus. The second focus is staff, making it easier for staff to work, giving them more time to spend with clients, and improving their workload and the way they work. That's an absolute focus. A by-product of that is savings, and it is that way around that this piece of work has been done. And the staff have generally been, and unions actually, massively enthusiastic about what they've found and the way it's been done. And as the paper says, having completed that, that's given us an assessment of opportunity to improve those things. And we'll now shortly go to a full tender, a competed tender, which Newtons are at liberty to apply for and bid for, like all other providers in the market. And that will go live shortly, and then a full tender process and an award of contract for the final design and implementation of those changes. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Committee, could I suggest that we do this in two halves, as it were? We look first of all at the in-year budget before coming on to the, what did you call it, the TOM work, I like that, which is the target operating model, i.e. the new restructuring. So the budget this year, yeah, your report shows us, doesn't it, you know, 6.5 million pound overspend in care, which you've successfully mitigated from elsewhere within your overall budget. I notice that of that 6.5 million, 4 million of it seems to be relating to pressures from last winter, some of which obviously fed into the early part of this financial year. And did you say that you had, obviously, we don't know yet what the situation will be with this winter, but did you say you have 3 million sort of put by extra to cope for any particular demand? And I'm interested in the mitigation things that you managed to bring to bear to not only deal with that overspend, but actually create an underspend in the overall budget. Whether, I mean, a lot of those presumably are one-offs. You spoke of contract inflation, instead of giving across-the-board rise to everybody, just looking at individual cases one by one, I guess that's what you're saying. Presumably, they're not one-offs, they will be showed in the forthcoming plans for the next financial year as well. So I'm just really trying to get an understanding of how you use those one-off mitigations and whether they are perhaps storing up further pressures that we'll see later.
Okay, so 3 million put by, not exactly, so our year-end outturn, our forecast for what will happen by the end of the year is a 2 million pounds underspend. That assumes between now and the end of the year, we will spend a further 3 million in terms of the demand we expect. Clearly, if we had a really good winter, we wouldn't spend that, and then we would end up with a further underspend. But we built into the budget, going back to the more sophisticated approach, a view of that we would see 2.5% growth over the year in acuity terms and a 2% demand in terms of costs. So our budget assumes we will spend all of that based on a typical year pattern. So it's not so much put aside, it's in our forecast, we expect to spend it, and then every week, every single Friday, we go through, is demand looking how we thought it was? Is it peaking? Is it dropping? Where's it coming from? Is it out of the ordinary? And that will inform that forecast going forward. But at the moment, we do expect to spend an extra 3 million between now and the end of March.
And that's based on the sort of type of winter, the figures that you received last year? So as you say, if things are better, there'll be a further underspend, but potentially things could be worse as well?
Yes.
Graham?
Just a quick one. Anna, in your presentation, you said that one of the reasons for the better performance this year was extra debt collection. That debt collection shouldn't mean a better performance, it just means better cash flow, not because it, unless you've written those off previously and are unwriting them off, then it wouldn't make any difference to the overspend?
Sorry, so I'm sure, I know Robin's here too. It's not because it's an improvement in performance, it's because we make a provision for bad debt, so it assumes that at a certain age of debt, we'll only recover a certain amount. So the work that's been done means that actually what we've collected and what we assumed we would get, and when you balance them all off, means that we don't need all of the provision was put aside corporately to cover it. Yeah.
Chris Smith-Phains?
Thank you, Chair. I'm a little bit concerned slash confused about the contract uplifts in residential care, because on the one hand, you're trying to follow the expected-to-pay rate, EPR, and on the other hand, you're talking about individual uplifts. And I'm just concerned that where there's been a lot of work to get payments in line, my experience is in learning disability and mental health, where you're trying to get payments in line, looking at them in a case-by-case situation, are we not going to veer further away from the EPR?
So the expected-to-pay rate is quite a challenge, a lot of authorities don't even have them. We get expected-to-pay rates in about 50% of cases. The reason that they're done that way is when we have a framework for care homes, we ask all of the tier-one providers, so if you like, our preferred providers, to sign up for expected-to-pay rates. And that assumes kind of a general level of care that we need. If somebody is more complicated than that, then inevitably, so for example, they're in a residential place, but actually they need some additional nursing, some additional mental health input, whatever it is, then their rates will be different. So we've, for a long time, only got that in about 50% of cases. Younger adults don't really have the same thing, because they are much more, for want of a better phrase about care bespoke, that, you know, there is no sort of standard assumption about what you will pay for a younger adult's package, particularly learning disability in some of the complex cases. So there's always an element of having to do both. I can say, which I think is a fantastic step forward, we're in conversation with the CCG at the moment about doing something together, which will really help the market in terms of standardising the rates and perhaps being able to lift them to reflect what we're seeing in terms of more complexity, in which case we would expect to get more expected-to-pay rates, but the rate itself will change. So I think it's always a mix, you can't just say that it will be that set amount. Clearly, going back to the hospital pressures and things, while we might want to hold out for someone who will give us the expected-to-pay rate, if somebody needs the care, then we have to act accordingly. And if we haven't got any other choices in that area, we will have to use something that's more expensive.
Just before I bring you in, Chris, just following up from that, I mean, there is acknowledgement in the report that Northamptonshire is a low spender. So if we're not necessarily increasing inflationary fees across the board, does that, that will mean that some people aren't getting rises, presumably? And does that not increase the risk that some more providers will go to the wall?
So we didn't, we did spend some on fee uplifts. So what we did is, for the people who accepted expected-to-pay rates, we gave them an uplift this year of 5%, and we did last year, but that, as I said, is only 40% of the market that are using that. So we do a sort of baseline, if you like, uplift. Yes, it's a risk, and that's why it's a bit of a short-term view to have to do that and use the money in this way. The flip side, as I said, is people's and providers will still come back and ask for more money if they need more money for that care. But I think there's an overall strategy question, which is the conversation we're having with Health, around how we get the right rates for care homes and nursing homes across the county, and how, in doing so, we ensure quality and consistency and all those other things. And that's the very live conversation. I'm pleased to say, generally, we haven't seen a lot of closures. We've had a couple that have topped over this year, but it's not been as bad as previous years. We're very keen that that doesn't happen, and part of that is about getting the strategy right for the fees going forward. I should just say, because you asked the question about one-offs, in our budget next year, we have assumed inflation, you know, uplifts for providers again, and our whole plan and part of the TOM work is to try and avoid having to use these one-off mitigations next year, so that actually we can give a bigger uplift to those providers.
Okay, that's good to hear. Chris, sorry about that.
Thanks, Chair. Thanks for the report, Anna. It's honest, as ever, in quite a lot of places. Starting at the beginning, so budget for this current year, we're told, only provided a net increase after savings of 2 million pounds, which did not adequately reflect the pressures we saw, especially at the end of last year. And then it goes on to outline some of those pressures, including, for instance, a 16% overall rise in client numbers. What increase in the budget for 2021 would you expect would cover both the increases we've seen in the current year and the projected increases in 2021?
So obviously, we're in the process of budget setting, but the demographic, so you'll see the growth built into next year's budget is a combination of the words demographic pressure and demand pressure, but overall, about 12 million, so considerably more than we had this year, which kind of reflects the real trend that we're seeing. And the only reason it's not 14 million, which seems to be broadly, no matter how much we do what you see as a year-on-year increase, is because of the work we're expecting to do in our TOM work, to try and reduce some of those care packages that end up very expensive where they could be kept independent.
So we can expect to see, and I take the point that it hasn't been announced yet in the budget proposals, something around a net 12 million pound increase in the budget for adult social care? And it would be your expectation, given current trends, that that should cover any future requirement, any, unless, you know, unless we see a year that, again, exceeds the trends we're seeing, that would cover it? Would that be correct? Okay, thank you. Just talk, thinking about client numbers in particular, then, so in paragraph 1.2, and I appreciate this is probably my lack of understanding, but the first line says, "In 2018-19, we saw a 16% overall rise in client numbers." Yet the first line of paragraph 1.3 says, "The number of clients receiving care is similar month to month, and they appear to contradict each other." Can you explain, please?
Yes, I can, I spotted that myself this morning. The overall demand levels went up by 16%, 21% in hospitals. Our client numbers did go up, but not by that amount. So we are already at the point, so you have to remember with social care, at any one time, we might appear to have the same number of clients, but 30% of them will change. And the question is, how many did we have over the whole year? So last year, we saw about 500 extra clients. This year, we're already headed towards that and likely to exceed it if the hospital demand continues as it is. But it's actually, it's 16% rise in demand and 21% rise in the hospital demand.
So I think basically, then, that 16% is more a reference to the acuity, the complexity of the needs, is that right?
So it goes back to what I said, all demand is broadly speaking, 40% volume, client numbers, and 60% acuity and costs of care.
I think I understand, thank you. So moving over the page, then, to, where are we? Yeah, the section 1.6 about hospital pressure, and we're told that, for instance, 55% of all our demand, sorry, hospital referrals in 1920 by the year end will amount 50% of all our demand, twice the regional average. And for instance, our stranded and super-stranded numbers are above all peers. Do we know why that is?
Sorry, we're only smiling because we have this, I don't know if you, I'll actually show you, I've shown you before, I think, we've got a live dashboard, actually, real-time dashboard, that shows you that our hospitals are on black at the moment. We have just under 1,000 stranded patients. And I've just come from a meeting with all the chief operating officers and chief execs around what are they stranded for? Because what typically happens in winter is, when the pressure comes on, what they say is, why are all the people stuck there who need to move? And can we move them so that people who genuinely need a bed and who are new in can get into a bed? The reality is, nationally, about 75% of those will be some form of internal delay to the hospital, and that's true here too. So they're waiting for tests or diagnostics, they were well, they're not well again, there's various things that the hospital needs to do. Typically, about 24%-ish are social care. Ours is not as high as that at the moment with social care. So some of them are waiting for something, but there is a process by which, once they're fit to go and we all agree they go, then that's a detox instead, that's a delayed transfer of care. Until then, they're stranded. So it's a combination, I think, of, I mean, admissions are up, and continue to be up. And this comes back to something, if any of the members in the committee are coming to the briefing on health and social care integration, next, next week, I think it is. We are really, really hoping to make a difference around admissions. Admissions is the answer to all of this, because actually, and I've said it before, I'll say it again, I thought it was quite powerful. I spoke to one of the GPs, who's in the STP Jonathan Ireland, who said, "Today, when somebody presents themselves in a home, particularly an elderly person, bearing in mind 90% to 95% of all admissions are over 65s, when they present in a home with a family who's worried and they've fallen, I have two choices: I have a prescription pad and I have a 999 call, that's it." And they 999 call. So our admissions are incredibly high, that's why we're outstripping the regional peers and all the averages. And what we need to do is shift that, and what we're trying to work with hospitals and GPs and community health to do is to say, how are we going to do more in the community to keep people out of those hospitals? Look after them in maybe step-up beds that we manage with health partners, or Katie and the care homes we've got, which we're doing already. And then how do we help GPs to keep people out? That's the big thing. But we are without question, our demand is twice what everybody else in the region is, and we are an outlier. So we all know it, we've just now got to turn our attention to switching off the tap and doing the right thing by people.
A simplistic conclusion from me, you'll be used to them. I would expect that, you know, those things, you know, those figures would tell us there are things that, you know, other people in our neighbours and other people, other people in the region are doing that we are not doing. Or there are things that we are doing that others aren't doing that are causing, you know, us to be so out of kilter. Is that, is that a fair assumption? And if so, is there a programme in place to make changes?
So yes and yes. Yes, we're probably not doing things that other places are doing, or we haven't done them in a joined-up enough way. I mean, you remember the CQC-based review highlighted some of those things, and funny enough, we were revisiting that again today. Are we still doing the things that worked? Put it into context, though, at this time last year, when CQC came, we have halved our detox, we have removed all of what were called the escalation beds, which is the extra beds the hospitals were buying around the county to just, for want of a better phrase, warehouse people and put people in temporarily. So they've all been closed, detox have gone down, you know, we've got less beds functioning. So we're doing pretty well in quite challenging circumstances, but yes, we need to do more. The big thing is admission avoidance, everybody knows that. And we're working with the, you know, every week I meet the chief execs, and we're working through those schemes at the moment, and working through winter schemes. You'll know from the press that the rapid response team is going to go live shortly, which is our call-out team that we'll do with EMAS, the ambulance service. That's the kind of thing we need to do more of. And we need to help our GPs to be able to support more people locally. I think other areas are better at admissions, that's the bottom line. And once you're in, if you don't have the capacity, particularly home care capacity is an issue, then you won't get people out again. And once they're delayed, then they're going to get iller and they're going to get more long-term needs. I will just say one thing about the home care capacity, because our acute colleagues will always say it's an issue for them. The other side of that is, once people are in hospital, people, if you're not careful, start to over-prescribe care, and home care particularly out of hospital. Our biggest issue is requests for two-by-four packages, so two carers, four times a day. It's really difficult to source those, really difficult, and in an already pressured market where we're doing 28,000 hours of care a week. So part of our work, and Katie's got a team working really, really brilliantly well on it, on what we call single-handed care, where they might prescribe that out of hospital, but then we go and do some work with them with equipment to bring that down and to reduce the need, so that we can free the capacity to help the next person. But it is a challenge, so we do need to do, number one thing is, avoid the admissions in the first place.
One more, and then I'm done. Jeff, that's okay. The section in the mental health pool, paragraph 1.7, the bit that sort of alarmed me was, and I think I've interpreted this correctly, that basically, the admin of the spend is with the, sits with the CCGs, and we're reliant on them for information. And what we found was, having, you know, investigated matters, that was that, well, quite a worrying phrase, records had not been properly updated and care costs ceased in a timely manner. And have we been let down by the CCGs there, or is it a bit more complex than that?
It's a bit more complex than, you knew I'd say that. So this is a contract that is actually commissioned by ourselves and the CCG, so we are the commissioners in this. We do a small amount of mental health in the county, but our actual packages are joint packages with them. NHFT, the community health partner, does most of the delivery, and we do joint assessments. I don't think we've put enough attention on to making sure those records are correct and managed and input, which we're now correcting anyway. But I think, to be honest, we're also seeing mental health overspend on the CCG side, and this is all part of a bigger plan that we're working on at the moment with health partners around the Mental Health Care Alliance, where we do more together, more preventative work and more step-down. The biggest issue in the county has been a lack of step-down. Once somebody's been through a crisis, we've shut so many homes and beds over the years that actually there's nowhere to go, it's a cost though really, really high. So we're trying to address that with some of our accommodation plans and working with them. But we've also now put in place a team, so rather than relying on partners who are administering this to do things, our team will do our side of the administration too. And to be honest, it's timely things like, if somebody dies, stopping the record. I know it sounds difficult, but for any social worker or care practitioner, switching off a record for someone who's died is not as important as looking after somebody who's in care at the moment. But we've got to do those things, it's good housekeeping. I think where we probably were let down, and I've been escalating I think where we probably were let down, and I've been escalated this and sorting this, is the financial reporting. Because if you pull a budget, we need to know activity, we need to know it every month, the same way we do for all of our services. And we need to be very clear what to drive in the cost. And we've just about got back to that point, because my AD Amy's been all over it. And I hope therefore, what we've seen is that overspend coming down month on month on month, which is good, and we need to continue to do that.
Okay, thank you. Michael?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. When I read the report, I spent some time thinking about it. And the, the overall tone of the report, the overall sort of messages that were coming across, I would sum up as positive. And I use that word because having been through a number of other scrutinies, been on the council for a number of years, there is a contrast, I feel, in the approach that is being taken now compared with previous years. And I would say it is much more professional and notice being taken of the comments which were made at previous scrutinies. I've been a critic in the past, and got myself into trouble, as is not quite usual, about the inability, failure to really tackle the question of forecasting demand. And I think you may remember this from a couple of years ago. And I got my knuckles wrapped for being critical, I do recall at the time. However, I've stuck by it. And what strikes me, strikes me two years on, is the contrast between the hand-to-mouth type of approach of two years ago and where we are with this report. Clearly, a lot of work has gone into asking yourself and analysing where demand is coming from and forecasting it. And I think the proof of the pudding is in the eating with this, that whereas we've had in the past, we've become accustomed to overspends, and overspends didn't really matter. You could take the money from reserves or you ready the highways budget. That is no longer an option. So that is, I think, focused minds, if that's the right word, but in a very positive sense. So as I say, coming back to the message of this, it's positive. I judge people always, not by what they tell me, but what they actually do. And when I see here that you are forecasting a small underspend at the end of the year, I take note. And I think that is a tribute to hard work which has been put in by the officers, by the cabinet members over the years, in trying to turn this directorate round. The question I've got, Mr. Chairman, is a simpler one. I want to relate my comments to the other major directorates, which we have responsibility in this council. I know this is straying off territory, Mr. Chairman, but it's something I will come back to. Because I think there are lessons to be learned in cross-fertilising good practices and the right approach from one directorate which is successful to another one which is currently failing. And I come to the question of agency workers. There is no mention in the report of agency workers. And I am aware that one of the principal problems that we have in another directory is the high percentage of agency workers that we have on our books and failure to recruit to NCC. So the question really is, could you let us know, could you inform us, what percentage or how many people on the payroll or working for adult social care are actually agency workers? How many are actual NCC employees?
So there are currently 12 agency workers.
12.
12 in the agency. And last time I looked, and the reason I was slightly query it because provider services changed, but about 1,300 staff.
Okay, well, there's an obvious pull-up question to that, is what do you put that down to? That we are able, in your directorate, to retain staff on NCC terms? And clearly, there are advantages in terms of continuity and accountability in having our own staff. What do you put that down to? And why is it that we've got such a low percentage of agency workers compared with other directors?
Well, I mean, I suppose part of it is, and other people would have said the same, trying to recruit into a service where all this sort of outward-looking fake things and all the press and all the noise and everything else makes it seem such a disastrous and horrible place to work, I think is really, really challenging. I have my own challenges. Interestingly, my bigger challenge would be keeping experienced social workers, who, not surprisingly, have seen their pay start to level off against new people. And that's a real challenge and one we're hoping to address shortly. Recruiting new people in, we don't seem to have the same challenge. But I think, you know, part of working your way out of the challenge, and we were no, as you just said yourself, councillor Clark, two years ago, we were no different. We had big issues, more agency workers, huge backlogs, we've still got backlogs, as I've said in the report, but a sort of different attitude and everything else. But part of it is starting to be positive and work out of it. And then positivity breeds positivity. And what we are trying to do, and particularly this latest piece of work, is engage those frontline staff in finding the answers to things. So we don't have a golden bullet. Katie and all the ADs in my service are currently working with children's on what we did to turn it around, how we got people to be responsible in budgets for forecasting and understanding their demand, how we started to change some of the ethos and practice and accountability, what information we use to build to inform ourselves of what we do. So we're trying as much as we can to share everything. We've been attending children's SLTs and they've been observing some of our work too. So we're really trying to help them do it. But I think you've got to start with a positive message somewhere and then, you know, breed on it and work with it. Very difficult to recruit.
Final comment, Mr. Chairman. I'm very encouraged to hear that there is an increasing element of cross-fertilisation of best practice from one directorate to another. We all are in this organisation, we're all in this together, as they say. But I am pleased to hear that we're not working in silos and that there are experienced members of staff who've got a success story, which clearly this directorate is based on the results, the figures and the projections. And that can only be for the good in terms of helping another struggling directorate. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I think that was a particularly insightful question and a very reassuring answer, because this committee has had concerns about the high level of agency workers in other areas. Something we've spoken about many times, something we'll come back to. I also think your point about forecasting is really relevant. I agree. I think things have got a lot better in adults over the last year or two, although bearing in mind what we were talking about earlier about the winter pressures. I think we appreciate you can't forecast absolutely everything. Sorry, Jill, you wanted to come in.
Actually, Chris asked my question about why we're so different here to other places. So I'm grateful for that answer. And I also echo what councillor Clark said about the positivity and the looking at the sort of looking at cells and really examining what's going on. And I'm very impressed by, a bit later on, where you say, you know, how you'd identified all the different pressures and the problems. So the one that sticks out a bit there is 3,400 overdue an annual review. Now, I know that's obviously something that you'll want to look at, you'll be looking at. But what is the implication of that? What, what does that tell us about the services? Is that a particular problem, or is it just something that's a tick box that is not really so relevant?
So this is going on to the section of the report about the, oh, the operating model, yeah. So it is good practice that you should try and review everybody annually. And to make clear, I'm quite open, and councillor Morris and myself agree, we need to be quite open about these findings, because I think it's a positive thing to know it. We thought it and staff thought it. And then the question is, what do you do about it together? It does not mean that they haven't had a review. What it means is they've not had an annual positive, like a proactive review of their care. So a lot of these people will have had a crisis review or have gone into hospital and had a review while they're there. Or we would have had a provider call saying you need to increase their care, et cetera. The consequences of it are that actually, you're probably not stepping down people when you should. You're also making more decisions in a crisis, which is always more expensive. So all the national benchmarks show that good practice would say when you review somebody, only about quarter of them should go up in care costs and complexity. And we see double that figure. So to me, what this is telling us is, because we're not giving staff and haven't got the capacity and processes to make sure we do proactive reviews, we're automatically driving probably poorer outcomes by being reactive and higher costs. So we've always wanted to get back to doing regular proactive reviews. And if somebody gets a crisis, you place them in care, you do the right thing, and then six weeks later, you should review them and then see whether they still need that care. So to me, it's about identifying that shift. And the consequences probably are we're spending more than we should because too much is reactive in the service.
Okay, thank you. Julie, under second, we keep on the sort of in-year budget and then we'll come on specifically to the Tom work.
Thank you, Chair. I just want to follow on from what Chris was saying, because I'm just a little bit confused. When it comes to the £4 million overspend for the bad winter, I'm a bit confused, because when we had a budget meeting, we were told that it was a good winter last year and that the budget did well because of that, that we were quite fortunate. And I realise that you say it was March and April, so obviously that came out a bit late. It just seems for, but bearing in mind, I don't know this, for 16% extra additional, just 40, I mean, £4 million does seem quite a lot of money just over those two months, when I'd been told we'd had a mild winter. If you can just explain that, thanks.
So as you said, the impacts of winter. So what happens is, we go into budget setting and we go into the end of the year. We're forecasting, predicting obviously what will happen by the end of the year. So when we were in the end of 1819, it looked like it was going to be a relatively calm winter. To put it in perspective, if you gain people in March and April, your impact in year is very, very small, but they have a full year cost the next year. So if you put it really, really simply, because it's broadly true, 30 people out of hospital who end up in a care home will cost you £1 million. So therefore, if you gain people right at the end of the year and it was a really strange year, because we normally expect more of what's happening now, which is November a peak and January a peak. If it comes that late in the year, it has very little in-year effect, but it has a big knock-on impact to the following one. Yeah.
Okay, Jane?
Thank you. Just to go back to the hospital pressures. And I was interested to hear you say that prevention and working with GPs is one of your priorities. Obviously, 25% of patients that are stranded in hospital, according to the figures you gave us, are there for no other reason apart from the fact that they can't safely return home. Is that, would you agree with that? If that's the case, 25% is quite a large number. And they are creating a cost both in hospital and, you know, work for you to devise a suitable care package on returning home. How much do you work in partnership with local agencies, with the voluntary sector, organisations like Care and Repair? You know, they have huge resources, they have huge skills, they have, you know, an awful lot of buy-ins in the community to support partnership work with your, with the work that you're doing?
So just to be clear, that doesn't mean to say 25% of them are waiting social care. They might be waiting home adoptions, they might be waiting all sorts of things, yeah. So we work very closely with the handover to Katie, because it's probably worth describing, I've mentioned before about Age Well Wellingborough and how well that's gone. And that's an absolute classic example of doing exactly what you're saying. We've managed this year to secure funding, because the CCG couldn't get the funding for overnight carers that Northamptonshire carers do. So people coming out of hospital who need someone to stay in the house overnight. And we've also continued funding Age Well Wellingborough. There's some further pilots there. The key to the integrated care system work we're doing and these community hubs will be exactly that, is we need to work not just with social care and with health, but with local providers about local need and then create options to be able to do different things. Katie, is it just worth you talking about, because it's really powerful actually in terms of Age Well Wellingborough, about sort of how little in effect social care gets involved in some of what goes on there?
So Age Well Wellingborough, which is a project that is actually being led by the third sector. And it focuses predominantly on people that are frequently attending GP surgeries. And GPs obviously don't perceive there's any clinical need other than it's probably frailty, so it's outside of what they would normally be doing diagnostic tests for. And also, people that have been discharged from hospital that are over 65 with no support. So they were deemed at the point of discharge as not needing any, any support. And the third sector, along with partners, so that includes NHFT, ourselves, Age UK, wrap think, wrap support around these individuals. So whether that's a phone call to start with, whether that's connecting them back to local community, other voluntary options. And actually, what we've seen, and it's very different, because obviously, when people are in clinical crisis or in social care crisis, the impact is always significant when you put in an intervention. But actually, when you're doing more prevention work, you don't actually know the success for much longer, because actually, it's a much more holistic way of working with people to remain independent. But actually, the number of those, so we're targeting particularly around two big GP practices in Wellingborough. The number of people that are attending three or more times that has reduced. And actually, we've managed to prevent a number of people going back into hospital. Because actually, when you ring people and speak to people the day after or two days after they come out of hospital, they're genuinely euphoric. They're really pleased to be home. But actually, when you get to days six, seven and eight, that's when you generally start to find problems again. And actually, working with the GP to say, you know, we're a bit concerned because, you know, Mrs. Jones says she's just feeling a bit under the weather and actually putting the right intervention at the right time, rather than leaving that and then people ending up being readmitted. Our involvement in that is we're part of the multidisciplinary decision-making, but actually, it's being led by the third sector. Because actually, they are in a much better place to do the things that people need, which is about spending time with people, finding out what people really want to or need to remain independent. And we only intervene when actually it's absolutely necessary for us to. Because actually, not, people don't necessarily want the social care, health, you know, riding in on their chariot to save the day. Actually, that's not always what people want. So we're closely monitoring that, because I think we, we've got another one starting in Corby soon. There's a different scheme starting in Northampton, probably in the new year. And that's working really with partners much more broadly about looking at all the skills and services we've got to offer to give people much different options to what we're currently doing.
Okay, thank you. Cecile?
Thank you. Anna, as you know, I like numbers and sometimes it confuses me. Well, first, if I read correctly the report, we, as a budget, care budget remain under pressure. We were £6 million and today we are on an overspend of £6.5 million. So we have increased our overspend by half a million on the care budget. Is that right?
I think the care budget's been pretty static at around £6.5 million, as the blow over from last year. But as I said, with the mitigations, then we're underspent, obviously. Yeah.
So now, because I like your things. On page 16, you have an explanation. And with older north person, older south, what will have been also useful is that you do for everybody, the north and the south, so like that. Because you said it's helpful for the unitary. So if I have a request, could we have on those charts separated also north and south? Is that possible?
So we're currently doing modelling and working on the splits for the unitaries. These are only called this because that's the locations of the team. There's quite a lot sophisticated work on the split. I mean, broadly speaking, even at a blunt split, they're looking at 52 north, 48 west. Soon, we will be able to do that, because we're having to feed into sort of shadow budgets. But at the moment, we're not in a position, because we're trying to agree what's the best approach to showing it in terms of income and costs and everything else. But we will shortly be able to do that and show the two unitary running totals.
And my last question. When comparing, you have those charts and you have last year and this year. And in fact?
Very few things have changed. But I am, when I look at campus re-provision, support leaving, and when you compare. Last year on campus re-provision, we had 51 patients. And this year, we have two under 65 and under over 65. You had 13 last year, you have zero. But strangely enough, supporting leave, what is it? You, you have suddenly... You, you have suddenly the difference of numbers. Where are those campus re-provision people gone or have we changed the services? Secondly, on rehab and respite, it seems that we have very few people, is this right? Or are we not having enough people in respite? And finally, I cannot really understand why under sixty-five, the cost of supporting living is a thousand pounds and over sixty-five, the cost suddenly dropped by less than six hundred a week. So is that because we have more complex cases under sixty-five? And because you have under sixty-five, what is for you and for your projection, it would be good to know the eighteen, twenty-five, twenty-five, thirty-five, thirty-five, forty-five? So like that, we know the number of patients we will have in the system. Because those costs sounds, well, the supporting living is thirty-one, thirty, thirty, thirty-two million of your total costs. So it's quite important to understand why is the difference under sixty-five and over sixty-five?
So you're right in terms of the campus provision has, it's, it'll be down to the coding of it, but the campus provision clients are appearing in some of the supported living clients. I think we have to be careful about averages here.
Yeah.
Because typically when in the service, what we do is we tend to take out the top five and the bottom five to look at the underlying trends, this doesn't do that. So actually what you've got in the under sixty-five is some very complex people, people who might be anywhere between two and a half thousand and six thousand pounds a week to look after. So this average doesn't really tell that story because you've got some people who aren't very expensive, so it's bringing it down. Supported living for somebody who's much older might only be a very small contribution towards something like extra care and they might be paying for most of their bills. We don't, we could do the age ranges you're talking about, we don't report like that because age is not something that, or age bands is not something we recognise in adult social care. We tend to deal with older persons over sixty-five as a group and then everybody else is a working age adult. So we don't tend to look at all the different age groups, we can, but we don't tend to because those are only the two concepts that we tend to work with. So I think if you were to look at, if I was to show you this again and show you taking out the top and bottom five, then you'd see a very big cost in the working age adults and a fairly low cost in the older people.
But when you project your budget, if you have, for example, let's say supporting living and you have five clients that unfortunately due to their condition are very costly and they are eighteen, you know we will have them for the rest of their life except. So basically for us, it's important to understand because that is a pressure that is, for us, is going to be there for twenty, thirty, forty years. And it might, I know the cases are complex, but when we put numbers like that, we don't see them. But also, it's maybe why we are very wary of the prediction. So if we don't understand you're the one who spend the most and are there to stay because out of those twenty-seven million that we spend on supporting living, those might stay the same when they go over sixty-five. And at the moment, we just spent five million. So those supporting livings that we have at the moment might become very important in the future. So that is the thing, I don't understand how you make your projection for the cost. Could you understand my question? Sorry, I am always thinking differently.
No, no, you're right, I mean part of the acuity prediction we make is exactly that. So what we've done over the last sort of eighteen months is we now model, acuity's just not age, just how many people over sixty-five we have. We also model how many people typically convert from one type of care up and then up and up again. So in all of these, we will do that. So part of our, when I said to you, we predict two percent volume in, volume growth and then two and a half percent in acuity, part of that is exactly that, so we're building in an onward protection, projection of who will come in and what level they're coming at and who will move up. And it combines both to try and be accurate based on past trends and then we forecast three years forward too.
Okay, any more questions regarding the in-year sort of budget position, the mitigations etcetera that are being used? Remember, members will have the opportunity in a short while to sort of come to any conclusions or comments. Oh, sorry Graham, do apologise.
Thought you might look left. Just a quick question, paragraph one point two I'm looking at, we've actually had discussed this before and I just thought I'd like to get an update. The number of, what work is being done with, or continuing to be done with the care homes to make sure that the emissions are appropriate and not things that care homes couldn't do themselves. I know that's something we were looking at before and work was ongoing.
So emissions from care homes is something the CQC picked up in their review and is still quite a challenge. So the CCG did a, a number of things on that back of the CQC action plan around enhancing care and health, health in care homes, sorry, in terms of training and skills and all those other things. But part of the rapid response team work that we will do is as well as nine-nine-nine calls and a fall in the home, we will also go to care homes to help them. The plan in terms of integrated community services going forward will be that we will have crisis teams who can go in and help a care home just to get over an overnight issue or two-day issue, if they've got illness in the home for example. It's definitely an area of focus, it's an area of focus that the regulators in health are saying that you're still, we're still not good enough at. So I think it's those things, the other side of it, going back to what I said about improvement and working with care homes and the joint care home framework is how do we actually generally improve them to make them more robust? Reliance on agency staff's big issue, nursing homes. So the more we can do to invest in that quality and then provide some crisis intervention if we can, then the less likely they'll be to admit people. So I think it's a real joint effort and we're starting on that journey now with the new team and then we're going to build on it in terms of that integration plan.
Cecile, you had another...
Just a question and that is more an opinion. As you know now, there is no mention of integration of adult social care with health. Where do you think we sit at the moment? Will that put some pressure on us if there is no green paper or whatever coming with integration of adult social care and health?
The green paper itself is not the thing that's driving the integration agenda. So the integration agenda is very much DOH SC now, so combines both of them. The long-term plan, the NHS long-term plan to all areas and in our area led by Lucy, which is very unusual as an area and health are first very suspicious, but now really saying this is a brilliant idea to have somebody who's non-health, non-acute lead write the plan. It's absolutely about integration plans. How are we going to do things together? How are we going to do it to close the financial gap? How are we going to do it as an end-to-end system to make it better for patients? And then how are we going to deliver on the ground? So the work that I've been doing with colleagues and we've been talking to MPs and departments around what an integrated health and social care workforce looks like and what plans we would like to progress is very much informing the long-term plan. There's a, we've had an initial feedback on that plan from DOH and the regulators. Great work by Lucy and all of our health colleagues as well in it. It's been really, really positive about ambition, what we're doing, how exciting the opportunity is for LGR and the creation of the two new unitaries gives us some real opportunities to work differently together on the ground. But you'll shortly see that published as a plan, which is absolutely pushing, what are you doing to achieve that integration?
Okay, thank you. And as I say, we'll, we'll have the opportunity, if people want to start thinking about what are they sort of conclude or any commentary they want to make about the budget. So, oh, sorry, I do apologise Michael, welcome back.
Very briefly, Mr Chairman, these three letters you mentioned then. Was that me or you?
You.
Always.
That's fine, carry on.
CQC, rather like Ofsted, I regard them as like an external auditor. Just two questions, when was our last CQC visit and when do you expect the next one?
The last CQC visit was July eighteen, yeah, July eighteen. And don't forget, this wasn't like a care home visit, this is something the Department of Health ordered because of our delayed transfers of care. And that was a full system review, so that looked at the acute, our mental health partners, GPs, social care, everything. And there's an action plan running for that. If I was a betting man, I would say we're due to have a revisit relatively soon. And obviously what they'll be looking at is what do we find then? Have you improved? Did you do what you said you would do and what are you going to do next? Because as I said, we're in a strange situation where actually we've improved loads of things, but on the ground it doesn't feel any better, you know, so it's really about what we do now. But I would suggest the revisit cycle will be quite shortly. So I would imagine that we will get something, I would think at least in the next six months.
Okay, thank you. As I say, we'll come back and have a chat in a little while about our conclusions of the in-year budget and the work that's ongoing, excuse me. I want now to turn specifically, more for my benefit perhaps than anyone else, to the target operating model. First of all, I apologise councillor Morris for not welcoming you earlier. Councillor Morris of course is the portfolio holder for adult social care. Please feel free to chip in with any comments you've got. Now, the target operational model, I'm not, well, none of us at this end of the table are, are social care professionals, so I'm going to ask some very simple questions because I'm a sort of simple kind of guy really. But as I understand it, the council has spent an amount of money employing a consultant to come up with an idea. The idea is that they suggest that somebody comes in and does a lot of things differently to the way that we are doing them. And if that is successful, that will presumably get a better outcome for our residents, which is the most important thing, but also save us money. And assuming that, they then get paid a chunk of money for succeeding. That chunk of money, if I remember from the cabinet report, anywhere between five and seven million, million pounds. Two things strike me about that. First of all, over the last year or two, and in fact the stuff you've been talking about earlier, there have already been a lot of changes, a lot of improvements to the way the service is operating and moving towards. So why do we need to do even more changes? And secondly, paying that chunk of money to a private contractor? And I'm speaking as a member of the public here, why on earth would we want to do that? What can they deliver that we can't do ourselves? Can you convince me please? A simple question.
Can I come in on that one Chair? I think what's important to note is that the fee that you're talking about is conditional upon success. So I think the work's very exciting. I think it really is going to change the way we operate in terms of the adult social care system. And it will have hopefully some crossover to other directorates as well, which will help with their pressures. Because if it works here, then although they aren't always the same, of course it will have some crossover. But I think the work, and I've seen some, I've had some initial, we've been through all the work that they've did, the initial work that was done, which was paid for from the rates retention pilot, so it hasn't come out of any of our direct budgets. It's very important and I think it was very exciting work. So I, I look forward to the conclusions of the contract that we're going to go into once we've gone to procurement of course. And I think the work will be very exciting going forward.
Okay, thank you. Still trying to get an understanding of exactly what it would mean and again why we need other people. But Jane and then Victoria. Sorry, yeah, please, of course, yeah.
So I think in essence, and the paper alludes to this, is despite the fact that as I said earlier on, we're benchmark wise a good performer, our customer experience stuff and the complaints that I get on a daily basis will tell you that it still feels really poor to people out there. And the single biggest complaint that I will get is, I spoke to the customer service centre and I thought, thank goodness, someone's doing something, they've referred me on to a team. And then they get referred to a team and then they get referred to a team and a team and it keeps moving around. And we don't actually get to spend time with that customer and the social workers become frustrated, customers become frustrated. We've also got very, very high backlogs of pending cases, not unallocated cases just before people get too worried about it, but there are very high levels of them, of people waiting for reviews. And we prioritise them in terms of how, how critical the need is. And the way that we've, we work means that we're always working on those highest critical, most high-risk cases all the time. So we're not getting to all the other people. Now, we've tried over two years to do lots of things where we've thought, well, that authority's doing that, so that must work, so we'll try and do the same. We've restructured teams, we've bought in specialist targeted teams, we had something called the short-term team and the high-impact team to help with crisis and then demand flows and surges and all those sorts of things. None of them have fixed the backlog problem and none of them have fixed the productivity time and the time social workers get to spend with people. And it certainly hasn't fixed the client experience and the customer and the family experience and those complaints. So the question to me then was, so if just throwing more and more bodies at it isn't fixing it, what is it that we're missing? And the fundamental thing is culture change. It's a change in why are our social workers not comfortable making certain decisions? What would they like to do but they can't do? Are we making our processes so cumbersome that they can't do the job in hand and actually they're just doing bureaucracy and not those things? And we have tried and tried to fix it. What we wanted to do this time around though, was someone to work with the frontline staff and exactly like we did with the hospitals when we did our discharge delays piece of work, was to say, what is making the difference on the ground? What, what are we not doing that other good practice shows that you should do? And how could we get rid of our backlogs? Because I talked to DASs around the country who don't have the same problems. And they might not have any more budget than me, they might have any more staff than me, but they don't have the same problems. So to me, we have tried lots of ways to fix it unsuccessfully and the staff feel done too. And it's now time to turn it around the other way, saying if they know the answers and we can bring in some best practice and we can bring in some different ways of working and they can help design it, then we'll get buy-in to it. The other thing time critical wise is we've got a brand-new care system coming in Eclipse and that has best practice processes in it about strengths-based working and how you work with someone to encourage independence. It's got lots of really good things in it that we've not done before, but our workforce is a long way off being able to work like that. And that will go live for us in April. So we've got a real time limited thing where we needed to say, what do we need to change? What's the new system going to bring that's going to make a real difference to how we work? And what do we need to do culturally? And that's, this piece of work, this assessment was looking at culturally what's stopping people? And there's loads of different reasons. Some people will say, it's because I struggle to have an argument or discussion with the family about what they want. I struggle because I can't get access to support I need from other teams. I don't think we've got the capacity, I have to spend too long on paperwork, it's lots of different reasons. So we want to tackle all those things together, make the most of the system and then do some culture change. It's a really unique opportunity. If it was as simple as, as, as you might think, I'd have done it years ago. But this is something, we've got to take this opportunity ahead of unitaries to bring all those things together and the timing is such that now is the right time to do that. We don't have the capacity and skills to do that ourselves.
Can I just add something? I think also as well, I mean, it was nice, thank you, to hear the, the, the comment about how adults have started to work very differently. But I think to understand that is not necessarily where you want to be because it's a continual drive focusing on the wrong things. It's almost retrospectively, you know, working with people with outcomes that you should have been able to do with your processes in the first place. So therefore if you're a social worker or if you're like, like us, it's kind of, we're, we're, we also can't continually overspend on care. And that tells us that actually somewhere along the line, we're not doing the right thing at the right time to get the right outcomes for people. And that's about processes, how we work, do we allow practitioners to actually do what they're trained to do? Or are we pushing people down particular processes that our systems make us do? And that really was the fundamental of what we wanted to look at.
Okay, thank you very much, Jane.
Thank you. Similarly, I'm a little bit confused, there's Newton Europe who have gone out and done this assessment. That's been paid for out of the rates retention scheme. There's a tender going out for the follow-up work, which will be what, between five and seven million pounds, but only paid on results. It seems a very, very odd way of doing it. And can I ask when the tenders are going out? You know, who is tendering for this? Where's the transparency in this? Because obviously Newton Europe come with a huge advantage of knowing the whole process inside out. And this payment on results, when? Six months, twelve months, two years, five years? How is that going? How is that going to be measured? I think we'd like some explanations on that, please.
So in terms of the tender will go out shortly into the open market. And it follows, you know, other councils have done the same sorts of things across the country. All the information that Newtons have and all the data and all the outputs will be made available to every bidder. And then any bidder, including Newtons, can apply for the work. So they'll all have the same data and they'll all have the same information. To be fair, a lot of our information is public anyway. But what they will do is provide actually how we use that and what it told us. So all the results will be made public, so everybody will have the same starting point from that point of view. In terms of the work that we've done so far, how will we measure it? So let's be clear about the range of the fees. So that is proportionate to the range of the savings. So if we actually only got five million savings, then you might only pay them half a million pounds in terms of the results. We're saying the work we've done suggests that we could save somewhere between 18 and 15 and 26 million over several years, four years. So what we've been doing is saying, and this is all part of the budget setting and the robustness process that we go through annually, is, is this a real saving? These things that have been identified as opportunity, real saving, how would you know you'd made that saving? How would you actually demonstrate that you had saved that cost? And you could say that these are the savings that are going to allow a fee to be attracted, attached to it. So we've done a huge amount of work about what it will mean, how many packages we'd expect to go down because we're stepping people down, how many more re-abatement things would we do, therefore saving the cost of care homes. And we have been all over it with our finance colleagues as well, checking what we'll use as our baseline, so where we're starting from and how we'll measure that actually we achieve the saving. And it will be the achievement of those savings against those baselines, which we'll share in the tender too, that will say whether we pay the fee or not. And the actual negotiation in terms of the fee, as in, do you pay anything upfront? Is there a retain or everything else? Will be part of that bidding process. So bidders will be asked to put forward their proposal about how that works. But there is a direct correlation between no savings, no fee.
So who monitors the level of service, the efficiency of service to customer satisfaction? How is that factored into what seems to be a savings-driven process?
I'll repeat again as well, the, it's not a savings, savings happen to be a by-product of this. So what we're looking for is improvement in the customer experience. So I would expect out of this that we'll end up with less backlog, more social work time spent with people. We'll probably see some productivity in the point, from the point of view of the number of cases that people deal with, how they manage their caseloads. So we've got baselines for all of those. Those are non-financial benefits, that's the first thing. Experience across other councils, Nottinghamshire, Derbyshire, Cornwall, Birmingham, lots of places that have done this, is if you get those things right, you get a saving too. So that's the first thing I'd say. This is not just a purely efficiency-driven thing. This is about getting the right processes. But the savings will be measured by our finance leads, the council's finance leads. And also, if you remember in transformation, they have a benefits realisation manager. So before we go into any savings programme for next year and onwards, we have to demonstrate through the robustness sessions, how will we make a saving? Where will we make a saving? And how will we monitor that we're making that saving? They will independently be checking, are our metrics actually changing to show that that saving has been made? As well as the obvious blunt tool, which is how much money is going out of the door for care.
Okay, thank you. Just before bringing in Victoria, these savings that they will be paid on, they're all revenue, ongoing revenue savings rather than one-off. Okay, thank you, Victoria.
Thank you, Chair. A couple of questions just on that point, though. You mentioned other councils and I've been in touch with Cornwall, their lead member. And so it might be a good time for me to ask not you to do some extra work, but Ian maybe to come back with a case study. Because Cornwall in particular have gone through this pretty much at the same time a year ago. So it could be quite useful for you to bring some figures forward on what savings they made and how they realise them, if that's okay. One thing I think that people would want some reassurance on, now my understanding is that the consultants are coming in to us, we're not putting this out to them. And obviously, there's always a, so it's not outsourcing. This is that they're actually going to be coming to work alongside us. So I just think, if my understanding is right on that, we need to be very explicit. Because soon as anyone grasps the word outsourcing, then everyone gets a bit twitchy. So if we could just have some clarity on how that works, my understanding is they come in, work alongside, bring up our skill set and then move away. But if we could have some clarity on that, because the word outsourcing is a bit dangerous here. Also asking, when you said you're going to work in other directorates, so is this going to sit in transitions with children's as well? Because we know that that's a place where we can hemorrhage money. And then final question is, obviously, the one area you said that the biggest risk here is time scale. So we've got to get the tender process done quickly and we've got to get them in. So what is the turnaround time? When would you expect them in? And then when would you expect them to start being effective and producing some kind of results? Thank you.
Okay, so yes, you're absolutely right. So it's, for want of a better phrase, an alongside model. And part of what we'll want out of whichever partner gets the contract will be that we get the skills to continue to do it ourselves and maintain that change and pace and everything else. I'd like to see out of the back of it that we kept within the service sort of innovation champions, if you like, so that when we go into unitaries, we can then also use the same skills to bring in, how do you work with housing and all those other things too? Because it would be a really sensible thing to do. And I think, and Katie I'm sure would say the same, one of the constant feedbacks we get is how engaged staff feel about the fact that they're learning and they're seeing things differently and then they're creating change themselves, which I think is really, really good and really important. In terms of other directorates, there is one last piece of work that we're doing, which is an all-age disability service review, which will look across health, children's and adults in terms of disabilities. And will apply the same kind of diagnostic view. We know it's a pressure for us, we know it's even more of a pressure for children. So we were asked to make sure that within the money that we were spending, whether some money could be used for children's for that. That's the specific area we're doing. If childrens decide to do anything else in terms of their ongoing bidding with the DFE and change and transformation, then that would be for them to obviously to put that case forward. But we are going to do the children's piece, and I think that would be quite powerful because it will also bring health into the equation too, about how you do things together for the right outcomes and better value for money as well. Time scales wise, we're hoping that the tender will probably go out and hopefully the next week or so. And we're expecting award end of December, something like that, end of December. So time for questions to go back and forwards and data and information to be shared. And in a sense, for us, that's quite important too, because we need a bit of a pause, because there's a lot going on with budget setting, we've got a new system going in, we've also got Partners for Change in who do this sort of culture of training-based work, which has got to get ready for the new system. So we're hoping that if all goes well, we'll have a partner in place for the new year, which will be when we're in testing for the new system. And then we can start working ahead of the new financial year in terms of starting to design these different areas of change and process change. So we're trying to get set up so we know the kind of target areas, make sure we've got a lead in each area, make sure staff kind of know what we're planning to do. And so it'll be all the preparing for it while we work on the system. But hopefully January we'll start work.
Okay, Chris?
Thank you, Chair. So I think, I think what I'm hearing is Anna, a lot of confidence from yourself and from Ian, that whoever delivers the, you know, the work that's going to be done, whether it's Newton Europe or somebody else in the new target operating model, that savings will be made as a by-product of improving the customer experience, which is great if that's how it works out. I have a worry, for instance, you were saying that new computer system coming in in April next year, we've only got a limited window to enable some changes that will mean we can take full advantage of how that computer system works and the extra things it enables us to do. And of course, the big worry is, well, what if the work that we're going to have done doesn't produce the things we think it can produce? We've got a problem. I get the confidence and I get that maybe that what-if is maybe an over-pessimistic view, but, but, you know, it's a consideration, I suppose. And my sort of overriding concern, however, is the issue around cost to us. So, you know, we were told in the Cabinet report that we had recently, that there was just not the capacity or expertise in the service to manage and deliver wholesale significant business process, re-engineering and cultural change. And this is why we have to go outside to get someone else in to do this for us. So point taken. That's unfortunate. Now, you did, Anna, you outlined in answers to the questions around budgeting, a whole load of things that perhaps we're aware of, that we feel we need to do and that we're doing some of them. So I'm making assumption that what this work's going to do is over and above all of that. Fair enough. My concern, overriding concern, would be that we shouldn't shell out a single penny of taxpayers' money until we have seen that whatever changes are recommended have been enacted, embedded and delivered the promised savings that are coming as a by-product of the work being done. Because my big concern would be, and I'm looking for some reassurance, is that we do pay out, we pay something out, and then six months, a year down the line, oh, it hasn't quite worked, it wasn't what we thought it was going to be, you know. And we've basically paid out a lot of money or some money for something that hasn't worked and we're back at square one. So can, are you able to provide, and I know you did earlier with, at least in part with your answer, some reassurance about when payments will be made out and will they be made and will they only be made if we are absolutely sure the savings are embedded?
So having sat through weeks, and trust me, it is weeks of our finance team looking over all aspects of this and what we do. And one of our big challenges, and you made the point, is over and above what we're doing. We spent a long time, quite painful time, didn't we, looking as well, are we talking about savings we're already making in a different way? Are we duplicating things? Are we looking to make too much from the same cohort? Is there too much going on to build to achieve this? So we've been through all of that to get to kind of a qualified view, which finance, my SLT, the intelligence teams, everybody has said, yep, we think this is doable and it's possible and we can see where it's done. We've also done a bit of a sanity check of, you know, how many cases would you need to save on to make this kind of money? So to give you an example, if we avoided a hospital admission, if we were in a situation where to make the saving, we would have to make 10 out of every 11 cases, you know, avoid an admission, that's just not going to happen. So we've done a bit of a reality check. So we've, in that example, only one in every 11 would need to be stopped to make a saving. So we think we're being prudent. We have gone really, really over and over this to make sure, not least because I've had to sign up to something going in the budget next year for the strengths-based working and I wanted to be pretty sure we were going to do it, obviously. So I am confident we've really, really, really nailed that. Some of the work that we've had to do and the pre-planning extra work we've had to do is going back to how are we going to be able to prove it and track it? Because we all know, in benefits realisations terms, you can have a big number on it and then it turns out not to be a cashable saving and you've just avoided something. But I think we've become quite skilled at being able to do that. I mean, Katie, you've led it as well, haven't you? I'm as reassured as I can be. We made sure that the savings that we put in were realistic against the evidence we saw and we know how to measure them. But the whole concept of the commercials will be that we will have to see these baselines improve and evidence signed off by our finance team before we make payments for the fees.
Michael, you wanted to come in?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of points following on from councillor Stanbury's questions. I would echo the need to get confirmation of value for money and delivery of service. That is very important. We are spending taxpayers' money. And talking of that and the type of service we're delivering, the responsibility on us at NCC is considerable because we are in many ways a monopoly supplier of these services. A lot, if not most, of the people who we're delivering these services to cannot get these services from anywhere else. And we need to remind ourselves that we, there is a special onus on us as a provider of monopoly service to give them the best value possible within the resource constraint placed upon us. I think previously there's been a view that, well, they can't get it anywhere else and they'll just have to accept it, which brings me to, first question is, there is a clear shift in language in this report towards measuring customer satisfaction. That is a long-tested and proven business way of evaluating how successful we are at the moment and have been in the past. Indeed, I was always brought up on the maxim that there are two golden questions you ask people. One is how are we doing? Rate it. And second one is how can we improve? So my question is, in the past, have we made any attempt to measure the customer satisfaction with our services? And are those, the findings of those surveys, are they in the public domain? And likewise, a before and after situation, I trust that there will be an attempt to do the same in a more sophisticated, on a more sophisticated level when the actual changes which come about from the recommendations here to improve things, when they're actually implemented. Finally, timeframes. Whoever receives the contract, whoever procures this from the council, has work to do. Is this something which we will actually benefit from as NCC in its present form? Or, as you see it, will the benefits that accrue, hopefully, will they all be kicked forward and be in the, under the roof of the new unitary councils? I'm assuming that we're putting together budgets for 2021 at some stage. May 21, the new unitaries go live. Will we see during the lifetime of NCC, in your view, any improvements which derive from these recommendations?
Okay, so we do do an annual customer survey, a satisfaction survey and a survey about social care. And there are national measures which are in the public domain. Whether they measure what you, what we're really talking about is a slightly different question, because they tend to ask questions, is do you feel safe in terms of the care you receive? Now, if you ask somebody who's receiving social care, because somebody's calling in every day, they may well say they feel safe. That doesn't really reflect what I see in my complaints inbox in terms of the experience. And what people will say when we have engagement sessions is, you know, I'd like to spend more time with my social worker, I'd like to keep the same social worker and all those sorts of things. I don't think that they are measured in any survey in a way that we could provide that baseline. But I completely agree with you that we ought to probably look at that kind of side of things and the customer side. One thing that we do want to do through all of this is look at some examples of customer journeys. So I think quite a powerful thing to do is to look at, so lots and lots of cases, real cases, have been looked at during this piece of assessment, is describe what the journey is now and then come back and say, how did it look different when we did it again later on, when we changed practice? Because that will say, you know, we ought to look at the differences of people's experiences, which I don't think is captured in any survey. So I think that's a fair point, something we should probably do and maybe capture some now that we've recorded and gone through and then revisit that later. Yeah, because it would be, it'd be quite a nice way to look at it and what people tell us, I think. In terms of the timeframe, so next year's budget, you'll see a three and a half million pound saving based on this sort of strengths-based working approach. Clearly, the year-on-year saving is expected, if our assessments are right, to go up towards six and eight million. So in essence, we'd get one year of benefit in NCC. And if we overachieve in that year, because actually we're more successful than the prudency that I've talked about, then that would be higher. But the significant benefit, without a question, will be rolling into the unitaries and into that future way of working, which is also key, given the demand that we've got.
You did mention, Mr. Chairman, I think if I heard correctly, you mentioned an expected saving between 18 and 24 million? Is that correct over a period of, yes? Now, when would you expect those savings to occur in? Which years? Is that spread over three years or could we, you talked about one million a moment ago. Where do you see the 18 to 24 million coming in?
So three and a half million is in next year and then it rises year-on-year cumulatively. So you'll see in the budget, I can't remember the exact figures off the top of my head, I should know them inside out by now, shouldn't I? But they rise year-on-year to the point where cumulatively, that's what we're going to be getting in terms of the, at the low end, 15 million, at the high end, the 26 million. But it's probably, that's the work we've been doing, is if we did this and then going back to the forecasting trajectories, we've looked at, well, if that's the flow of customers and we continue to do this, then what would be the cumulative effect? So it's a four-year savings programme. We won't be doing the work for four years, we'll be doing the work over that first year. And then it will have a cumulative effect knocking on over those future years, which is what other councils have also seen.
Can I just, can I just also just quickly add? We are doing a piece of work at the moment with Healthwatch around, specifically around what our customers feel about their current experience. And it's different to our statutory return at the moment in survey, as in we've bespoke it more around the things that we believe have come out alongside this and change. So we've got a baseline and we have asked them to do that because obviously it would be totally independent. And we've asked for customers who want to be involved on a more kind of focus group level. kind of focus group level around the experiences and what changes as we go through this process.
That's good, and will we see the results of that? Will it be put in the public domain?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, time's moving on, I've got Cecile, then I'd like to close this unless there is anybody else desperate, oh, sorry, Jane, you did say, didn't you? Cecile, then, Jane.
Thank you so much. When I read, I read, I know they are, Newton Management is a consultant, and the language is very, language consultant is so fluid that it cannot, for example, if you get page 22, so this programme is not about a restructure or reducing staff, and it goes on, I mean, it's really a language that consultant use, and page 24, about opportunity overview, lower hand and upper hand, it's again, very much consultant languages. Now, we have a budget of 177 million in adult social care, and you say that it would be better for everybody and it will just save us between four and five million a year. Now, if we teach people to be more independent, if we revolutionised the way we approach social care, I'm sorry, but I think we should go for more saving, because that is four million of saving out of 170 million, it's not a lot. So my question is, are we ambitious enough? Because basically, you said it's not a restructure, it's not, so it's tweaking. When you read, and what are the opportunity for the service user? When you look, you have 55 days in average waiting time for customer going on to a social, a home care package, that if you are an older person, 55 days, it's two months. When you have a family who lives 600 miles away or 200 miles away, it is, the cost for that family is quite outstanding because they have to go. So for me, if we, you say opportunity, older people improve making outcome, well, if we support people to be more independent, we should save quite a lot of money, because it will be resetting their way of thinking of old age is not becoming dependent on others. So for me, it's not, I am for this model, but if it is so good, I think it should save much more. Do you have any view on that? Thank you.
So I think we have to, as you already know, I think last year, we were the 24th lowest spender out of 27, I think probably 20th out of 27 at the moment. There is a reality check around, is it possible to do that if you're already that efficient? And is it then starting to cause issues or unintended consequences? But I think the other thing you've got to balance that against is the demand. So actually, even if you're making savings on these things, if your demand's coming in and increasing, you're only going to make so many savings because you're getting more and more customers. So we've tried to balance all of those things. Do we want to be more ambitious than this? Yes, we do, but we've got to make sure it's manageable and safe and that, you know, it works on the ground. So it may well end up more, which is why we've got a stretch potential target, but we've got to be realistic about what we can do and about what that continued demand coming in does. And then over time, of course, with things like the social care and health integration work, we'll start to stem some of that demand and then it will level off. So we need to be careful that the other things we're doing aren't already making savings, that we weren't duplicating them.
Yes, what, what I find in this document is that it says that, basically, it's like a tweaking document, that is what it feels when you read it. Unfortunately, they said we have tried over the past few years, and it's a trial, and what I find, we don't have, we don't have the model that they are driving at. We don't know if it's, for example, a birth stock model where you get people, the nurse going to assess and after divide between social care and so on. So we, what I have, it's not a clarity. I see a lot of tweaking, and as you said, we are not expensive and we are doing well, but we are doing well despite a lot of our mechanisms that is not good enough. So that is my problem. If, and that is what you said, we are doing well despite the fact that our practices are not good enough, when we put our practices with a lot of rigor and better for everybody, I'm sorry, I come to the thing, even with the pressure you will have, we should have more saving. So I don't want to put you, but I expect, we need to be ambitious because a unitary need to have their costs under control, and the better the programme is, the more, because good become better becomes the best. If we are average, we will be average, a bit worse, and maybe back to our old. Does that make sense?
Just in response to that, I was actually taken by Anna's comment earlier about some of the larger authorities that are already doing this sort of work, and it may be that we can perhaps look at examples from elsewhere, and that might be something we want to discuss as our sort of conclusions. Sorry, Ian, did you want to come in?
Yes, well, I was just going to come back to what councillor Perry said about doing a study, very happy to do that, and obviously, we will see the results that they have garnered, and hopefully, as Anna has said, this deep dive that will happen once the procurement's taken place will hopefully garner more savings, but not at the expense of staff or our services. This is the important thing to note, is that this is quite unique in many ways, and the way we're paying for it is very unique and the right way of doing it, because there is no expenditure without success. So I think we will have to see, obviously, the cabinet are going to keep a very close eye on this process as well, and it will be coming back to us, I'm sure, at various stages for us to have another look at as well, and probably back here. But yeah, very happy to do a case study and bring forward some facts and figures from elsewhere with.
I do remember this council tried social impact bonds, which had a similar sort of payment method not too long ago, but that didn't particularly work.
I don't think we can compare the social impact bonds with.
Well, payment on results.
Yes, and I would agree with you, but this is a totally different model and very well thought through as well. And once the procurement is completed, we'll have a better idea of what it looks like. But I think as a starting point, it's very different from the social impact bonds. Thank you, Chair.
I've got Jane, and then I want to conclude this, and we'll have a chat about what we think about it all, if that's okay. Jane?
Okay, thank you. Just to really sort of pick up on a bit of detail, and just expand a little bit on what Cecile was saying about tweaking. The diagnostic work that's already been done is showing up in, on page 24, what are the opportunities for our service users and pathways in progress? Already talked about 34, the 3,400 overdue reviews, in which, I mean, you must be aware, and there must be savings to be made in that, where people are overpaying on care plans, where people are, or they're underpaying, or the people are no longer with us. You know, these are things that you should know and be doing already. And the 8% practitioner time spent with face-to-face service users, now, I've just done a bit of arithmetic, that ends up at 16 minutes in their work, you know, in their working week. That's an incredibly small part of their working time. And, you know, what is the rest of the time being spent on? Is it spent productively when we have 3,400 overdue annual reviews? These must be things that you're aware of already, they have been highlighted by the diagnostic work, but these are, again, simple things that could be done without this expensive consultation.
So the, just to pick a couple of things, I'll ask Katie to comment on the 8% thing, because it's quite interesting piece of analysis, too. The consultation did not tell us what we already knew, that we knew that we weren't, we know how many reviews we do, we track 50% reviews. The question to us was, why are we not doing them? What's stopping us? And likewise, what are people spending their time doing rather than face-to-face with customers? And it's the, it's the, all the information underneath it, why are we not getting consistent decision-making? Why does one social worker spend more than another one? Why does one get, always work on outcome goals and another one doesn't? How are we going to get that consistency of practice? On the overpaying and underpaying, that doesn't have anything necessarily to do with reviews, annual reviews. As I said, we're reviewing a lot of people a lot of the time, we're just not doing those proactive every year, is your care right, how are you, et cetera, et cetera. In terms of things like people dying and stopping and everything else, we, as you know yourselves probably, we did an audit on all of those things, and we're pretty prompt on those. My issue more is, are we proactively managing people? So, yeah, we stop things quite quickly and, you know, things happen in a process and an order, but that is different to, are we talking to the customer and having the conversation about what's needed and whether they need more, less, step down and following up after a crisis? But the practitioner piece, do you want to come on, Katie? Because this is quite.
So obviously, when we saw 8%, we reacted in the same way. Actually, that is slightly lower than other areas, but other areas are between 12 and 16%. The majority, so, good, good in nationally in adult social care is 20% of the time, which is only a day a week. Looking at what else people are doing, so the system, our Care First system, which is being replaced, is a massive issue with that. So there was about 23% of time is spent on system-style stuff, and in one of the, so if I take older people's social work teams, 42% was on those back-office functions around computer systems and administration tasks, which obviously, given their skill set, isn't necessarily the best use of their time.
Can I add, Chair? Sorry, just quickly, I mean, without repeating what's already been said, the whole point of this is the customer, improving the outcomes for customers and changing the way we operate. So I think, or looking at cultural change, and I think that's got to be applauded, and I hope that the outcomes of this will be very successful. And if other areas were applying the same rationale or other councils who have already done this, then, you know, systems will improve and the customer outcome will improve. And I think we must hold on to that as the two things, the customer outcome improvement and the cultural change that hopefully this will all bring. And obviously, going into the unitaries, delivering a service that is fit for purpose for the two unitaries, and I think this is a massive step in that direction. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, thank you. Whether we call them customers or clients, I think the outcomes that they receive are certainly what we're all looking for. Cecile, we're going to have a chance to conclude, of course.
No, I will come back to what we say about this programme, this revolutionary programme. If you are in the world of industry, the automotive industry, for example, which is quite cutthroat and maybe not the best example, year-on-year, when you are a subcontractor and so on, they ask you to have efficiency programme of 2%, 3% or 4% depending, and that causes a lot of problems. But this model basically gives you an efficiency of 2% to 3%. And that is for that. Could we please be a bit more ambitious? If that is so good, I think we need to be more ambitious, because otherwise, it's a lot of work, it's a lot that we could do maybe without using, as the chairman said, we could do it in order, because basically, you are talking an efficiency of 2% despite the increase of population. Thank you. Is that correct?
I think that will lead us on actually to sort of what we think about it in the discussion. I want to thank Ian and the officers for being in attendance, especially Anna, fantastic, once again, explaining these complicated issues to us. You're welcome to stay, but I want now to move to, I know Ian's got a meeting to get to, but I want now to move to a discussion within the committee, just so we conclude any thoughts we have on both the in-year budget position and the target operating model. And following that, we'll move on to the next item agenda, but I'm likely to have a sort of couple of minutes break in between. So, members, in-year budget, what have we heard? Are you happy? Any conclusions?
I think it's much more realistic than it has been in the past, Chair, extremely. So I think we're all reassured on that, and I think perhaps we could come back sometime next year and have a look how it is progressing once the assessment and we've moved on to the implementation.
I think so, I mean, certainly from, purely from a budget point of view, the fact that this demand-led service is looking at actually underspending, potentially underspending, is quite an achievement. How, whether there are any repercussions for the client at the end of that is something we need to think about, certainly, but I am sort of almost reassured by the overspend in the care element, because that proves that they are, hopefully, that proves that they are being looked at and not ignored. And I also think Michael's comments about forecasting improvements are worth mentioning as well. Cecile?
Just because Anna did mention that, I think if we have a budget of 6,000, could we be alerted as soon as possible instead of being surprised by, because I think that is what we would like, to be reassured that in the winter months we stay, and if it's not, how we could help, or maybe if good practice are better, we might not have a surprise. So I would like to have a sort of reassurance monthly or every two weeks that we don't, with the winter pressure, we are still on budget. Thank you.
Jill, I think that clearly there are risks around winter, there are other risks within the whole area as well, and yeah, you're right, we don't want to be, have things bounced on us. Jill?
Thank you, Chair. I'm very reassured by this, as the approach seems to be looking at a better customer service and the public or the clients looked after in a better way, with an added bonus of the financial savings on top. I think, you know, that's very commendable, with looking at ourselves, looking at our processes, and obviously, you can always improve, and if we can improve and improve the service to the customers and the less waiting and more, much happier, less complaints, et cetera, then, you know, that, even if you just get less complaints, it takes up less admin time, so that can be a really good outcome.
Okay, Jane, we need to decide obviously whether there's anything specifically we want to scrutinise. I think we've probably covered everything we were initially concerned about. Whether there is any further detailed questions that we wish to ask, but again, I suspect we're probably okay for now. Just taking up very briefly Wendy and Cecile's point about looking again, we have the option monthly through our pre-agenda setting meeting to come back to this at any time we feel the need. Hopefully, things will be reported to cabinets if there are any issues. Sorry, Jane?
Thank you. Just in light of Anna's prediction of another CQC review, could we sort of, in a diary that in as an item for the agenda later?
Well, without knowing when and if that is going to happen, but certainly, if it happens, we can react to it. As I say, we meet monthly, so it wouldn't be difficult.
That's what, yes.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Any other comments? I mean, I'm pretty happy with what we've heard, I mean, I do recognise there are some risks, and I do recognise that this will be an issue we need to come back to, and I think it's important that we do so, but I'm happy for this committee to sort of stay flexible and just pick things up as and when. Cecile?
I think we were reassured, I mean, we know now, at least, Anna knows the bottom of the problem if it's, and we are going to readdress that. What I find amazing is, as Jill said, our, the people who need our services didn't have the best experience possible. So now, what we have to link, and maybe that is what, if the people are satisfied, how that will have an impact on our bottom line, because, and that is maybe for next year, that we could monitor that. But otherwise.
And that brings us on, doesn't it, to the target operating model, which is the sort of second half of this discussion. Michael?
The word I would use to describe where we were and where we're
Chairman, the word I would use to describe where we were and where we've been is turnaround. If, as I say, we come back to the sessions we had in previous years and then the sad reflection when we looked at the overspends at the end of the year and questioned all the assumptions, I do get the feeling of reassurance here that a lot of overdue homework has been done to improve procedures, to analyse the methods of working and in effect to get better value for money. The budget has hardly increased and yet we're in a situation where there are no overspends forecast despite managing demand in the way that you've done. And indeed, there will be, as things stand, and we, there are caveats obviously about the winter, there will be a small surplus on this budget by, by the end of the year. So, Mr. Chairman, I'm, I'm reassured, I'm cautiously optimistic that with what we've been hearing and what we've been seeing and with the way you're planning the future, the directorate is being well led and is in good hands.
All of which will be reflected in the minutes, but I'm getting the feeling there's no desire for us to do anything more at this stage. I mean, the portfolio is, the holder is here to have heard these comments anyway. But I do want to move on then just to see if we've got any comments about the target operating model. I'll kick that off by saying I think it is disappointing that we don't have the skills and the resources already in the council and we feel the need that, you know, it's necessary to go elsewhere. And I'm sure we'll all have different opinions of why that is, but nonetheless, that's what's happening. Any comments? Cecile?
I still feel it's not ambitious enough.
Victoria?
I'm going to disagree with you on that when you say it's not ambitious enough. I think we've been too ambitious in the past and that's where we, we've come a cropper. I mean, I think we're looking at the savings here, there's, there's a wide range of savings and I actually think they are ambitious considering our, that the base from which we're starting. And even though we've asked the portfolio holders to come back with other councils, what we'd also need to know is where those councils sit in terms of spend per head because their starting position might be that they were spending a lot more than us per head in the first place. So I think from the very low base that we're starting, I, I think that's ambitious savings. I wouldn't want to be any more ambitious because I think that's where we've come a cropper before. I'm sure the staff have more ambitious views on this, but they're only going to, you know, I think I respect the fact that you're, you're sharing them cautiously with us. That's just my opinion.
I mean, it's been mentioned a couple of times by a couple of people about looking at examples of how this is working elsewhere. I do wonder if we want to formally ask the executive to undertake a little bit of work because certainly we'd, we'd like to know, wouldn't we, I'm sure? Chris?
Well, I think there's, there's two things, Chair. Firstly, there's the issue around the work that's going to be done and whoever does it and the payment they're going to be received. You know, for me and I'm sure for everyone else around this table, I want to be utterly one hundred per cent sure that not a penny of taxpayers' money goes to whoever it is unless we can be sure that the savings that they say that can be delivered are actually delivered because that's fundamental. We shouldn't be paying out for work that doesn't produce the results we want. And secondly, and it's an allied point, once the work has been done and a plan has been agreed and we're starting to put it into place, I think we will want to know here what that is, what there is, you know, what, what's going to result, you know, what the savings are going to be and we'll want to monitor closely delivery.
I think the assurances you're looking for aren't unreasonable and we could maybe, you know, add that on to our comments to the executive that, I mean, I'm assuming this will be the subject of a future cabinet report anyway. But I say, we certainly should underline the fact that, that, you know, the public money element of it is underpinned. Cecile?
Could I have clarification on the upper hand, which I think if we have the upper hand, it would be the maximum of seven million that we will pay to the delivery of the operating minimum. So basically for us, we, the twenty-nine million, we will need to make thirty-six million of saving in order to make our twenty-nine million for the bottom line. Is that right or not?
Are you able to comment? Okay. All right. Anybody else in that case? Julie?
It's not about time. I just want, because when we've spoken with you before, you've said about the, and you mentioned the more holistic approach that we're aiming towards. And I just wondered how that was doing because I know you mentioned about housing and like community centres and have we started on that journey? Thank you.
No, so we already are, we're working, as Katie's already talked about in some of the pilots anyway, with, with health and other partners, but we're also talking to district boroughs around community hubs, where we might place them, what sort of services we might place with them. We're talking to health partners around whether we can have social work bases in some of their centres too. And then all of this in terms of the long-term plan and the integration plan, we're also going to look at then how we create community resilient networks. So a bit like Agewell Wellingborough, which has been fantastic but very small, how do we scale that up? So actually we have the repeat of that in different areas so we can call on people who aren't social workers or health practitioners. How, it might be housing, might be adoptions, might be voluntary sector, could be all sorts of things and the use of leisure facilities is the other one to do those things. So absolutely there's plans afoot and progressing all the time to do that.
Thank you very much. And just going back, Julie, if you don't mind, to where we were at then, the target operating model, I think we're going to ask the executive formally to, if they want to look at examples of case histories and we would like those to be shared with us and also just to underline the points made about, made by Chris about the sort of resilience of the paying out the money, which I guess is part of the procurement programme anyway. All right, in that case, thank you very much. Thank you again to the officers in particular for coming to help us and also to Barry Scar who didn't, wasn't needed, but thank you. We're going to move on to the public health agenda, but yeah, absolutely. Four-minute break, we are pushing the time, but four minutes just to stretch your legs and get some fresh air. Thank you very much.